At this time, we would like to welcome Pastor Jason Brown from Friendship the Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation.
Let us pray. Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we come before you this evening thanking you for your goodness, your grace, your love, and your mercy. We thank you, Father, for what you've accomplished for us through your son. We thank you, Lord, for your love that you have bestowed upon us in Christ. We pray for this meeting tonight, Father, for the leaders of our county. We ask God that you would give them the wisdom and the instruction, Father, Lord, that they need to make the right decisions, Father, Lord, that is in the best interest of our county. We pray for unity amongst them, Lord. And once again, we just ask God that you would give them the wisdom, the leadership, and the guidance that they need. We thank you for our county. We thank you, Father, Lord, we thank you for the work that you're doing in our county. And we just want you to know tonight that we love you, we honor you, and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You may be seated as we prepare for the pledge of allegiance.
All right, as most of you know, most of the time, we have our servicemen and women that do our pledge, but we also have people who have worked in the community and have sacrificed their time, you know, for people in the community. And tonight, we're going to surprise Bethel. He didn't know this, probably, he thought he was just coming to lead the pledge. But here in a few minutes, we're going to have him and some of the scouts of Troop 499 lead our pledge. But I want to mention that we've got letters from Representative Sheryl and Representatives Bricken that are congratulating you and mentioning that it's over 40 years in scouting and your dedication to that. And I want to mention here, as we get ready to do the pledge, Bethel has been performing of Warren County for over 50 years. But Bethel is equally known for his time with the Boy Scouts of America. I was introduced to Bethel as a sixth grader, and I'm not saying the year. He was a parent volunteer of what was then Troop 631, which later become Troop 499. He had his two sons in the troop and was eager to help. Bethel has revealed many times that he didn't think too much of me at the time I came into the troop. I was a scrawny little kid that had a big imagination and short attention span. That didn't stop Bethel from helping me develop along with the members of our troop. Bethel became scoutmaster in 1984, and within three years, had three Eagle Scouts, including his son Jeff and me, and countless awards as a troop and as a scoutmaster. Lord knows, we teenage boys had a lot of fun at Bethel's expense. Bethel had ways of punishing us, though, that I still hate to think about to this day, the middle-of-the-night setups and push-ups outside in our underwear in the dead of winter, the apologies and community service for our annex, and on and on. Were just part of the ways he made us realize the consequences of our actions. With me having three daughters, my involvement with the Scouts through the years has been limited, but I still count Bethel as one of my greatest influences. There's no doubt that there are hundreds in Warren County who can say the same. Bethel has continued his work with the troop all these years and has seen many more achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, join the order of the era, earn the 50-miler award, and canoeing as we did in 1983, and on and on. Even though I had become less and less involved with the Scouts during my late teens, Bethel and another scoutmaster made sure that I pushed through and achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. My project was developing a trail in Rock Island State Park. The Eagle Trail is still there today, over 30 years later, and on the park's mouth. On behalf of all those who have gone through Troop 631 and Troop 499, I want to thank you, Bethel, for all your hard work and dedication to the young people of the Rock Island and campaign area and Warren County as a whole. And before we let you lead the pledge, I was trying to find the paper that had the Eagle Scout in it, but I did find one from 1983 where we did the 50-miler, and we had one boy that nearly severed his Achilles tendon, 90 percent, and we were out in the middle of nowhere on the water. You had to do 10 miles a day in five days on the water. And Bethel and the other men of the troop made sure that that boy got what he needed to be helped, and we completed that. And that's just a testament to your dedication, Bethel, and we ask that you and these boys lead us in our pledge. If you would stand.
Before we do the pledge, yeah, Blaine was a little wet behind the ears when he came in to the boys' group. At the time, I told our scoutmaster at that time, I said, "He gonna never make it." He's too much of a mama's boy. But I tell you what, now, you talk about somebody that surprised me, Blaine would've gone camping every weekend, I've said that many times, if somebody would've taken him. But it was good, it's been a good ride, I've enjoyed it, and I'm glad that Blaine's dad's here tonight to see what's going on, too. I'd like to see as a hands of all the men in this room who have been Boy Scouts in your life. Good number. Good number, thank you. How many Eagle Scouts we got? And when you say Eagle Scouts, you don't say I was an Eagle Scout. If you were, you still are. Once an Eagle Scout, always an Eagle Scout. The boys that have come tonight that are going to do the pledge, I'm gonna let them do this. Evan Womack and Campbell Kelsa, I'm gonna turn it over to whichever one of those boys is gonna do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As I looked around the room tonight, my wife came with me, she had a couple of errands she wanted to run while we were here, but she got done and she's come. And not only did she show up, but two of my grandsons, who are both Eagle Scouts, Gavin and Braden Lewis, are here tonight, and I was really surprised and pleased to see them come in. Okay.
All right, with that, Lisa Colerole, please.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Steve Flynn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-two present.
All right, with that, next, I will accept a motion to approve the docket. We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is a reading of minutes. We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes. We have a second. Anyone want to speak to that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Would we also get a motion to approve them as written? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is our public comment. First, we have Stacy Lee from Patriot Group. Yeah, we have two minutes, and Commissioner Bell, I'll ask you to be my timekeeper.
Okay. Hello, my name's Stacy Lee, and I just wanted to give you guys a Bible verse before I started. 2 Corinthians 5:17 says, "Therefore, if anyone is in Christ, he is a new creation; old things have passed away; behold, all things have become new." So we're here to petition for paper ballots, and the reason why we're doing that is because the state's already got legislation that's going through the House bill. Anybody here familiar with House Bill 2074? Okay? Anybody, any of our commissioners here familiar with HAVA? Okay? It stands for Help America Vote Act, and at this time, $7.6 million has been allocated for the state of Tennessee to reform voters, and you can use this for paper ballots. At this time, the funding would be matching funds, so if it costs us $10,000 to do it, the state would give $5,000. In the state of Tennessee, there's 95 counties, and out of those 95 counties, there's 65 counties that use direct reporting equipment, and that is hackable because it uses the Internet. I know that we use micro-vote here, I understand that, but if you look at, you know, it's when I tell people about paper ballots, the first thing they say is, "Well, that's too difficult." Well, you know, sometimes we have to do hard things for future generations, so I'm asking you guys to consider that and look into it because our future is at stake, and it's looking like we're gonna need reform across the whole state. Because if 65 counties have direct reporting equipment, that means it's completely hackable. You all have computers, y'all have been hacked, right? You know what this is. It's not that hard to hack stuff. So that's why, if you haven't asked your constituents if they want paper ballots, I highly, you know, recommend that because we do serve under a representational government.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
All right, next is Nikki Jewell.
My name is Nikki Jewell. I'm a small business owner here of 23 years, and I just want to appreciate you guys for doing the best job you can with the money that we have here. Y'all are being very conservative, and I appreciate that. Thank you. But to reiterate what Stacy was saying, we just want to inform you and educate you tonight, encourage you to stand behind us on we, the people. We, the people, are concerned about our freedom and our rights and our liberties at this time. We do have absolute proof that the 2020 election was stolen, rigged, et cetera, whatever you want to call it. There is tons of evidence backing this up, and I would strongly encourage you to go to this website and look at this for yourself. You can go to frankspeech.com and go under Fix 2021st, and under that, there are different topics. There's a class action lawsuit that you guys can actually sign. There's also Dr. Haldeman's report on there, where he is a cyber expert, and he has been studying these machines for 10 years. And he has found out that these, all these machines are hackable, even the older ones, the mid ones, even the newer ones are hackable, and the newer ones, it's just easier for these to be, for the, if it's hacked, it's just easier for that to be hidden. So again, I'd encourage you to look at that information for yourself, but we just want you guys to stand behind us on our freedoms and our rights. It's the main point tonight. Because we were founded on biblical principles, and our Creator has given us certain rights, and these rights are life, liberty, and a pursuit of happiness, and we demand these rights. We are a republic, and that means that we, the people, elect you guys as our officials to serve us as a free people. And I know most of you know that, but that, just sometimes that needs to be stated again. We're not a democracy, as some people say. Again, please, I encourage you to look at that information that we gave you.
Thank you, Nikki. And next, it didn't have time to get on the docket, but we did approve Trinidad Ramirez.
I want to thank you all for blessing me. I know last time when I served you with Article 18, it was shocking, but you know, our Father tells us in Scripture that knowledge, without knowledge, his children are gonna perish. So I brought that knowledge to educate you on what's happening in our nation. And what I brought you was the actual report from Wisconsin by their Office of Special Counsel to show and validate that we do not have a secure voting system. Now, who can I give this to? This belongs to the county. And that's for our vote. If we can't secure our vote, my service, the service of the men from Warren County that died here, is all gone in vain. I am here, my brothers, to protect all of you. I'm a servant to all of you. I've already been crushed for you, and I'm gonna need a little bit more than two minutes. I ask you, don't dishonor me, because this information is crucial, because I can only tell you, the paperwork that I left you with my name that's in front of you shows you my security clearance in our intelligence community. And so I am bringing the information so that we can all be on one sheet of music. Is the sheriff here today?
No.
The county sheriff?
No.
This is for the sheriff. Is the prosecuting attorney for Warren County here?
Yes.
Okay? And this is for you. That, for the prosecuting attorney, is an actual live investigation that's happening right now across the United States and all 3,143 pounds, my brothers. Just hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have a rule that we have to follow. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Then, how can we get the information that we need to protect ourselves, to protect you? Because I have one more piece of paperwork to give you.
Yep, time's up. Trinidad, you can email any of us.
This is it, brother, because it's, it is the codes to the FEMA that I want to give to you, all of y'all, because we are in dereliction.
Trinidad, we're gonna have to move on. I'm sorry, but we have rules we have to follow. All right, with that, we'll go into special recognition, and that is Executive Haley.
It's always a good time when we can celebrate the success of departments and sanitation under Josh Roberts' leadership, has had a complete transformation and turnaround in those operations. One of his employees, who has been exceptional in managing the office and doing all the quarterly reports, handling all the time sheets for his 35 full-time and part-time employees, handling over the litter grant and all the paperwork, and basically, the completion of that process, all the tire disposal, all that paperwork, everything that is done through that office usually has it touched by the hands of Tracy Myers. So I'd like to recognize Tracy Myers tonight for her dedication to Warren County and her due diligence in everything that she does as a county employee, so we appreciate you and the hard work that you've done, and you've been part of that great success story that we can say is sanitation. So if you'd like to come, to present you with this.
Thank you. It's an honor.
She wants to take a little picture. Turn around.
I really enjoy working for the sanitation department. It's really a great place to work. I have the best boss, Josh Roberts. He really cares about his employees, he cares about the citizens of Warren County, and he does a wonderful job, and it's my honor to work there, and I appreciate what everyone does. Thank you.
There's also a proclamation to be made. It is Safe Digging Month, and so usually, the gas companies, utility companies reach out to my office to do a resolution in front of the commission to recognize the fact that before you dig, please call the 811 number. So here's the proclamation. Whereas each year, the underground utility infrastructure of Warren County is at risk through unintended damage by those who failed to call 811 to have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in undesired consequences such as service interruption, damage to the environment, personal injury, or even death. Whereas Tennessee 811 and nearly 600 member utilities promote the Call Before You Dig number in an effort to reduce these damages. And whereas designated by the FCC in 2005, 811 provides potential excavators, contractors, and homeowners a simple number to reach this one call center to request utility line locations at the intended dig site. Whereas through education of safe digging practices, excavators, contractors, and homeowners, we can save time and money and help keep our community safe by making a simple call to 811 in advance of any digging projects, then waiting the required amount of time, respecting the mark lines by maintaining a visual definition throughout the course of the excavation and project, and digging with care around the marks. Whereas safe digging is a shared responsibility to know what is below, so call 811 before you dig. Now, therefore, I, Jimmy Haley, Warren County Executive, proclaim the month of April 2022 as Safe Digging Month in Warren County, and encourage all citizens to join me in this worldly service. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is the executives' report. If you would like to go ahead and do that, Executive Haley.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've had my report. Couple little additions. I know Mr. Wiltshire asked out about TDOT doing a safety survey at Centertown at that intersection. They did one, they said it does not warrant a flashing signal light at this particular time. If we wish to pursue it, we could, but it would be at the full expense of Warren County to pay for it, erect it, and maintain it. We're still in negotiations with the railroad, met with them, railroad officials, about the Morrison Convenience Center, so we're trying to work through that, and the TDEC finds that may result from the leakage that's still at that location downtown Morrison. With Morrison, with the TDOT, we're hoping that some additional infrastructure money will be coming through TDOT for the railroads, and so there might be some funds available to either relocate or to do upgrades at that particular center. Also with TDOT, the pedestrian study, the community block grant, planning grant is being pursued by Rock Island, so I think Mr. Savage has played a role in that as well, and Beth Campbell, so heard from Silas today. There's also some additional appropriations money that's entered bowling, brought to my attention, so there may be some availability, some more appropriations for earmarked projects. And so with the Governor's Grant, it looks like through the General Assembly, we may not be getting that Governor's Grant money this year, but we don't know what's gonna play out in the legislature before they recess. So, but you have my report, if you've got any questions.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Prater, second by...
Accepting it, you don't have to...
There are motion to accept. All right, we have a motion to accept the report by Commissioner Prater, second by Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is Finance Department Report, Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
Move to accept. Motion to accept from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Agriculture UT TSU Extension Quarterly Report, Ms. Hilda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the county commission. You should have a copy of my report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those at this time. I will say we're great and happy to be back, fully staffed in the extended office and working hard.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Stotts to accept the report, and second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Hilda.
Thank you.
Next is our Warren County Quarterly Airport Report.
Mr. Chairman, if I will.
Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Tonight is, we have the, will not have a report simply because Mr. Dyer had accepted the position as the airport director, and this is his first day. Last month, if you, as you recall, Mr. Tindall did give us the report, and so all the information is available to you, it would just be an extension of the weeks or a month that, you know, difference as far as the complete report. But I'd like for everybody to welcome Mr. Dyer as our new director at the airport, and he thought he would come here, introduce himself, and Mr. Dyer, if you would please, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to serve the citizens of Warren County. It's true that I just started this morning, and in fact, I just received the passwords to the computers, and I'm still figuring out how to turn them on and get into them. So the next time, I will have a full report for you, and I appreciate your indulgence. But I'm confident I can do the job, and I'm looking forward to serving you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to accept.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy. Motion to accept.
I don't see how we could accept it.
That is true.
There's nothing to accept.
There's no report, that's true. All right. Next item is our Codes and Environmental Quarterly Report. Director Rich Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the court, you have a copy of my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Move to accept.
We have a motion to accept from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone like to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Rich. Next is our AMA Quarterly Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have my report, and if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Motion from Commissioner England to accept, second from Commissioner Tyrone Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Jim. Next is our AMRS Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. Y'all have got a copy of our report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Move to accept.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lee to accept the report, a second from Commissioner Ross. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Director Denny. Next is our Industrial Development Board, Mr. Don Alexander.
Good evening, members of the commission. You have a copy of my report. In addition, I've been asked to say a couple of things that seems to be of interest to the commission. Want to start off by saying, thank you very much to all of you and the 40,000 economic developers we have in Warren County, because as you've seen from the recent paper, we have just announced a new industry to come into our area that hasn't really formally announced. announced yet, but will, and it is Apollo Medical. It is located in the old Aquatec building is the nickname that it has, at the corner of Belmont and Red Road. And the plans are to start off with approximately 50 employees, moving to 200 in a five-year span if business continues as they projected it will and everything looks good. So it's all of us that has provided that business environment that has helped us entice industries to this area. Not one person does it, but all of us do it together, and so I commend you for that. In addition to that, and along those same lines, our TCAT at McMinnville is doing some tremendous things. Paul Herzog is here as chairman of BRAC, and we have just recently had our BRAC meeting there. BRAC stands for Business Roundtable Action Committee. We had that at the Tennessee College of Applied Technology here in McMinnville. We had individuals from each of the distinct colleges there to make a little presentation as if they were being interviewed. I was impressed with the quality of the students that are coming out, and naturally, we need to pat the instructors and the staff at TCAT for this. I'll be honest, when I first came, TCAT didn't have that great a reputation, but they have completely turned it around where most of our industries now are calling TCAT, and TCAT's not even having to call on them because of the need of these trained individuals. So I really do want to just applaud them for the work that they're doing. In addition, a lot of you saw that in my report, there have been eight different companies not only expressing interest, but actually visited the Old Novaris site, which is located in the Mountain View Industrial Park. There is a great deal of interest in that building because it takes so long to build one, and the cost is going up exceedingly, so there has been a great deal of interest in that particular building. And out of the eight, I think four are still very interested in that. So we will see, continue to see a great deal of interest in that building, and I think for long, we'll have a new corporate neighbor in there. Having said that, we still have the speculative building. I think what you're going to have, if you've got four interested in it, you're going to have one that's very pleased and three that are disappointed, so we're going to take one of those three and make them another corporate neighbor in speculative building. At least that's the plan. So I think that can be real good for us. In previous times, we've asked about the Elam Industrial Park, industrial site, pardon me. We are at this time in the application process for an invest prep grant, which is administered by the Tennessee Valley Authority. If we land, or I'll say when we land this grant, it will help us with the matching funds to provide a test of hydrological, which is like wetlands, archaeological, which studies the land around it as far as what has been there in the past, and then also the endangered species that might habitat that area. So those are very expensive tests, and we will know something about that probably toward the end of June, I'm thinking, maybe before. In addition, the Tennessee Department of Transportation conducted a virtual meeting with Executive Haley and myself, and they seem to be interested in that site, in that the proposed road access that they are studying at this point. They want to take a step further in that they want to do their own archaeological study of that area and make sure that it's going to work properly for everyone involved. So that was very encouraging. And going to, back to summarize, the community that we have here, there are students in our community that even after all of the available scholarships that are, have the ability to take at this point, there are still those gaps. And I see Randy nodding his head. There are still those gaps where it makes it difficult for people in our Tier Four community to get to the TCAT or Montlo State Community College for robotics, other things. There's lab fees, there's possibilities of not being able for transportation. The Citizens for Progress is helping tremendously with the dual enrollment program out of our high school. It is a last-ditch scholarship fund, but it is taking place with, through the BRAC, through the Chamber of Commerce, that we are raising funds in this community to help these people break that cycle of poverty. And we do that by helping them help themselves, and we're investing in them. I commend all of you for that, and I will stand down now and answer any questions.
All right, let me get the motion first. Motion to accept the report from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Bowden. Anyone want to speak to that? Commissioner Henderson.
Mr. Alexander, have you gotten any word on what's going on at Rock Island with that Old Mill Building? Has there been any more contact from the state with you on that? Thank you.
Officially, nothing. I understand that they are, and when I say they, it's the state of Tennessee. Department of Environment and Conservation breaks down to their division of Parks and Recreation. They are staying very thoroughly and working toward trying to help us get that Old Mill preserved. And that's all I have at this time. You're dealing with the state of Tennessee and Tennessee Valley Authority, and it just takes a little bit of time. I wish I could fit the switch and say, let's go.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go into our committee reports. First is Budget and Finance. Commissioner Scott Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a lot to report, just like to mention that it's getting close to budget time, so all directors and department heads need to be getting their budget prepared and have it submitted to the finance director. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Building and Grounds, Commissioner Carl E. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you noticed the new sidewalks in front of the building, and hopefully the paving will be done, or the concrete work will be done out there pretty quick and get that finished before too long. And that's about all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Economic and Agriculture Development, Carl D. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. March the 7th, the E&amp;A Committee met, and we received reports from Ms. Hilda from the UTTSU Extension, Mr. Don Alexander, the IDB, and then Keith Bowden represented the airport. Also, I would mention that Reagan Kelsey gave a, the fire president gave a report and said the fire was off about 20%. They have one, the main project this year is to redo the roof at the old courthouse and fix the overhangs. I wasn't going to say a lot about this, but the rest of the meeting, it was a rather long meeting. It was taken up, Attorney Bratcher, County Executive Haley, Finance Director, Mr. Cotton, and the Economic and Agriculture Board discussed several issues at the airport. Most of you commissioners probably know some of what's been going on. Some of you may not, so I'll bring a little light to it tonight. And the reason I'm doing this is there's a lot of people here that are concerned. There are pilots, different people that are affiliated with the airport. I would ask you to stand up. Those that have come concerned the airport, they're concerned about the condition, the way the airport's been conducted, some things that's been going on. The last several years, nobody can deny that we've had several issues at the airport. The airport right now is operating off a resolution that was passed in 1947. That's a 75-year-old resolution, and it's run its course. So the Economic Agriculture and the Legislative Committee will be looking at some issues about restructuring at the airport. That's just, and anybody who wants to talk about it can talk to those that have been talking. I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Education, Commissioner Carleen Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, our Director of Schools, Mr. Grant Swallows, is currently in Nashville, attending the annual spring legislative and learning conference in Nashville. One of the big topics of discussion is the continued discussion of the BEP funding module that's out there. He says it's just absolutely nowhere near being passed, but, and there's been several amendments to it. Tomorrow, Wednesday of this week, it's going to be, it's scheduled before legislation and, before the legislature. And as I said, though, still lots of discussion there. And in the month of April, he feels sure that he's going to be able to address the, all of us, as well as his school board, the status of it and what the next steps will be, because it does have deadlines and steps that it's supposed to be accomplishing. There's also several education bills that are being reviewed currently by the legislature, and I mean, there's just so many things out there, from charter schools to lottery to addressing funding, how many students should be in a classroom. It's amazing how many of them are out there. But there's one particular one I really wish you would address and learn a little bit more about, but it's moving very quickly, and that's House Bill 2783. And it basically says that schoolteachers and bus drivers who have retired can come back to the workplace without affecting their pension or retirement. And this is really big because that means they can come back out of retirement, and that's going to help address two shortfalls that we have, and that's schoolteachers and bus drivers. And it's so, I mean, it's been through many committees already, receiving lots of favor. Actually, on the 14th, when it went, it had 92 yeses and zero nos. So, and a couple more amendments have been added to it, but it looks like this bill's going to pass, and it goes through 2027. So hopefully, that's going to be a source of future teachers and bus drivers to come back into the school system. Our next education meeting is scheduled for 5:00 on April the 11th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Financial Management, Executive Haley.
I must report, except all the amendments that will be considered on the docket tonight, past Budget and Finance and Financial Management, and we'll be scheduling another meeting in cooperation with Budget and Finance soon, so.
Thank you. And as Chairman of Health and Welfare, we met earlier tonight and approved in our committee the purchase of a enclosed building with seven additional kennels for $49,000 if there is any money left from the governor's grant money. And that is a contingent that we did pass it through committee, just so that we did review it and approve it if that occasion arise. That's all I have on that. Next is Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Gary Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're at the end of the month, we're going to be doing some bidding on some of these projects. We got, we got bridge rails on Mount Zion Road and bridge rails in the Mud Creek area, and we're getting a bid on a new bridge out there on the Bates Hill Road, and that's happening this, the end of this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Legislative, Commissioner Daniel Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Legislative Committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Stephen Hilton.
Yeah, we haven't met, but in last, last month, we did agree to look for some new judicial commissioners. I've talked to David this morning, and they put out the application, or put it out in the newspaper. We have had zero response to that. So again, here we are, searching for judicial commissioners. And I do believe that one of the major key roles here is the fact that I think they're starting pay somewhere around $9. So we definitely, as this budget cycle comes around, we probably need to be looking at that if we're going to get somebody in that position. I think it's a very important position within our county. I mean, they can literally send people to jail by writing warrants and stuff, and so we need good quality individuals in those positions, and I think the pay needs to reflect. We will be having a meeting once the budgets come out. We can review those for the committees, or the chairman that we need to. And then I did ask, I called Executive Haley today about the codes update, if we, the part-time position there. I don't have an update for that.
Do you have a move on that yet? Two people submitted applications for your job.
That's all I have to report. Thank you. Next is Safety Committee, Commissioner Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Safety has nothing to report, but like you've said, we need to start talking about our budgets, so that's what we need to do.
Thank you. Next, County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Joseph Stotts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Corrections Partnership has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Redistricting Committee, Commissioner Randy England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, Redistricting hasn't had to report.
And then last but not least, ARP Review, Executive Haley.
We made the recommendations last time to approve those two line items, and for the rest, to be, to take the standard allowance for those proposed projects to come back before ARP, and also to be brought back to the county commission for voting, so.
Thank you. With no old business, we go into new business tonight. Number one is Resolution Number 4-2022 Broadband Ready Community. Executive Haley.
Mr. Chairman, that was recommended that we pass that this month in order for our internet and broadband providers across the state to be able to apply for funding, and so we were recommended that we do that. Mr. Bratcher drafted that. It was passed in committee, and so it makes no financial commitment on our part. It just allows Ben Loman, or Charter, or any of those broadband providers across the state to be able to apply for those grants inside the county for any necessary upgrades.
Thank you. Motion to accept from Commissioner Prater, second from Commissioner Ruble. We can voice vote on that, correct? Robert? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, number two, Amendment GF-FY 2122-21. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ruble.
What this entails is the balance of the governor's money. We had to have this spent by deadline, which is June. These were requests made from respective departments concerning things that they needed. One of the more important ones was the $135,000 for the load systems for EMS. They're pretty dated and starting to cause some problems. The 2262 that you see there that says truck purchases, that is the balance of the money left over after we purchased the trucks for Greg and Maintenance Department, so that was applied back to these. It passed Budget, Finance, and Financial Management unanimously, and I so move.
There are motions from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bowden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bowden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristi Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes. Next is item number three, Amendment GF-FY 2122-22. Establish Amendment to Drug Fund Grant. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is basically pass-through money in the amount of $13,000, and as you see in line item 54710, that is how it's going to be distributed in the budget. It passed respective committees unanimously, and I so move.
There are motions from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bowden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bowden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Lane Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes. Next item is Item Number Four, Amendment GF-FY 2122-23. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is from Josh at Sanitation. As you know, in Health and Welfare, the...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Out of line here. This is, this is the, this is for the food. I'm sorry.
Yes.
They, they notified us that they were, they were short in their food budget, and they wanted to bring $1,000, and that is from donations. That, that comes out of a tipping fee line item, and Justin and I have discussed that. That's a little unusual place for that to be, but it's been there for a long time. We're going to take care of that during the budget, but it also passed the respective committees, and I so move.
Motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carlene Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater. Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Lane Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes. Next item, Amendment Number Five, or Item Number Five, Amendment SF-FY 2122-3. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'm, I'm back on schedule. This is from Sanitation. As you know, the prices have increased for disposal of tires, so that's the $32,000, and Josh is running really close on gasoline, and that is where the $2,000 goes. It also passed both committees unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Tyrone Spartman. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell. Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carlene Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Lane Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes. Next item is Item Number Six, Amendment GP-FY 2122-5. Mr. Chairman, I'll defer that to Director Cotton. Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to the General Purchase School Funds to appropriate additional funding to cover legal fees in the defense of a lawsuit.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Hillis. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carlene Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Stephen Helton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stott.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Lane Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes. Next item is Item Number Seven, Appointment of Judicial Commissioners. Commissioner Helton.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Kevin Deason, David E. Williams, Walter McLaren Jr., Michael E. Neal, and Don Cantrell to fulfill a two-year term to expire March to 2024.
We have a motion from Commissioner Helton, a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Item Number Eight, Appointments to Warren County A&amp;L Fire Board. Commissioner Carl D. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Warren County A&amp;L Fire Board asks that the following persons be added to the Fire Board this year. Walker Kelsey, Brayden Carter, Nick Cantrell, Kalen Simpson, Lindsey Vaughn, Ryan J. Moore, Lauren Childers, and it's signed, "Thank You, Regan Kelsey."
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Brown, well, the second from Commissioner Stotts. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, oh, Commissioner Ross.
And maybe something we need to clarify, if, if Mr. Moore retains the office of judge, I don't think he can sit on any board, so is that a, is that correct, legal?
Is that correct, Robert?
I mean, I don't have any problem with sitting on the board if he can. I just want to make sure, if we're going to appoint something, that it's not going to come back up.
I'd have to look into that to be certain. It would probably be the case that he would have to do that himself, because the restriction would not come from this body, it would come from the judicial body. But I'll get the answer to you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is Item Number Nine, Approval of Notaries. Ms. Lisa.
This is a list for the notaries. Thomas O. Bratcher, Sarah Ford, Rita Summerlin, Amanda Turner, Amber Ordónez, Angela D. Newman, Kelly Cale, Danny Martin, Teresa S. Barrett, Donald W. Sullivan, Chris Farley, Kimberly Chapman, Shannon Terry, Kelly Cantrell, and Jeff Cantrell.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Helton to approve those. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I want to ask, do we want to take a five-minute recess before we have the nonprofits speak for a few minutes? Somebody want to make a motion to that? We have a motion from Commissioner Savage, that we take a five-minute recess, a second from Commissioner Ross. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
.........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Mr. Chairman, I think it's Black History Club.
Alright, yes it is.
Books from Birth, Carrying Hearts, The Chamber, Chair Mental Health, Citizens for Progress and Habitat, so.
Thank you Executive Haley. There it is. Mr. Wayne Warfer, thank you sir.
Thank you Chairman. I know it's only four minutes, but what I'm trying to do is, we've only been established for one year and this is our second year now and the church, which we're leasing the building from, is really working with us. So we have one suite that's already done, we filled it out. Now we got another suite we got upstairs. So what we're trying to do is get a little bit more money to help us out. We've already got some good funding for us rent is concerned, so the doors are gonna be open. Next thing is, is trying to get artifacts, track lights and stuff like that to make it more of a nice museum. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to establish this to where we educate people, not only Warren County, not only McMenville, but tourism. And we're reaching out. We're getting people from all over, which is nice. And educating people is the thing. That's what makes us great, as Americans. So this is what I'm proposing. And I'm not asking for a whole lot. I don't know whether you're asking for, you're asking any amount tonight.
Yeah, that is up to you if you want to mention what you'll be requesting.
Okay, well, we don't know yet, but we're working on it. And our main thing is making sure that spectrum, making sure that insurance, like I said, the track lights, and getting set up cases for upstairs. So this is what we're working on right now. And once we get that done, that'd be great. Admission is free, doesn't cost anything to come in. What we're doing, we've got a conference room upstairs, it's got, it can hold about 20 people. And if any of your organizations or whatever, you don't have a place to come meet or whatever, we have a conference room, we have a kitchen, and so we're really coming along. My main thing is reaching educators and reaching the kids. That's my main thing. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
What are your hours, sir?
Right now, the hours are from Tuesday to Friday, noon until 4:00 p.m. Saturday is noon until 2:00 p.m. I'm off, I'm the founder. I'm off on Sunday and Monday. But with all the media that we have, for us, we got website and everything else going on, Facebook, all you do is give us a call and we can set up a tour. So that's no problem. No problem whatsoever.
Anyone else?
203 West Main Street. That's the old clinic. It used to be the hospital back in 1930s. It's already a historic building, you know, such kind of deal.
Alright, discovered you. Alright, thank you Wayne. Alright, next, Carrying Hearts United, Diane Sneed.
Well, a lot of you already know me. I am Diane Sneed. I do represent Carrying Hearts United as the chairperson. We are going on our 12th year to be a 501(c)(3) legitimate organization. And I am just thrilled beyond thrilled. And we, we've expanded and we see our purpose being truly fulfilled. And a lot of times, we've seen it come full circle over and over. And that's what I want to see. But tonight, I want to say, first of all, for the past few years, that you guys have been kind to allocate to us a sum of money that we have truly appreciated. And last year, when I went before the budget committee, I was kinda took off guard because we had asked for an increase. And then I was told by one of the commissioners that they had been approached by a citizen who was concerned that our money was, that we were being allocated was going out of the county. And it is not. And so tonight, I'd kinda like to clear that up because I'm sure some of you have questions. Our money does go to, well, at present time, we are servicing 11 hospice units. Of those 11 hospice units, there's one in McMenville. But there are others that are servicing from other counties coming back into McMenville. And those are, Amedisys, which is found in Kimball, Tennessee. Then we have Avalon, McMenville. Adoration is out of Manchester. Charis is out of Coop. That's four out of the 11 that we are positive comes back into Warren County and services patients here. So when they come back into the county and notify us, the money that we use is staying in the county. At the time that I was, like I said, approached with this, I didn't have my facts and stuff together. So tonight, I want to say that out of the 11 units, the four that we service usually are approximately 200 to 230 of the packets that we send out five holidays out of the year. Out of that 200 to 230 packages, 60 to 85, and I know I'm giving you gaps there, but you guys have to understand, our senses are up and down. And unfortunately, they're up too many times. But the 60 to 85 of the patients, I mean, out of the 230 stays here in Warren County. 60 packets, and that's staying on the low side, times, we're averaging like, we're saying $5 per package. That will total $300. When you prepare five holidays out of the year for those 300, for those 60 people, you're up to $1,500 a year. So you guys allocate us $1,000, your $1,000 is definitely staying in Warren County. And besides just servicing our hospice patients that we're sending happy packets to, we also provide, when the nurses call us and tell us there's a need, they may be coming home from the hospital and they're needing a hospital bed. And they don't have hospital bed sheets. And I can guarantee you, you won't find a sheet that fits a normal bed that'll fit a hospital bed. So if the nurse notifies us, we'll buy a pa-
I'm sorry, Ms. Sneed, that's time.
Oh, four minutes goes fast.
I know. Does anybody have any questions? We have two questions for Ms. Sneed.
What's in your happy pack?
We always have, we always put something in there that occupies their time, such as puzzle books, reading material. We try to put something to munch on. We try to put something that's useful, such as lotions and lip gloss and things that, you know, can bring a little comfort to them. And always, something that'll make them smile. And that may be a little stuffed animal. It may be a little sun dancing thing that you put in the window. We have been amazed at the thank you notes that we get back and it'll say, let me tell you this one, and you'll get a kick out of this. We put back scratchers in. The first time we did this, a little lady out of Red Bull in Springs, because some of the patient, the hospice units go that far, you know, service that far, you could tell she was elderly, her handwriting was really wiggly. She wrote and she said, "Thank you so much for remembering me on the holiday and for my back scratcher." And, you know, you would think, "Now I can pull up my socks." And I thought, "Okay," you know? And it's just little things. And we're getting lots of thank you notes back. Now, that's acknowledging that we're doing our purpose.
Well, thank you.
Is there any more questions?
Alright.
We're not playing now.
Thank you for what you do.
We're sincere. Thank you.
Alright, next is Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Don Vizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Don Vizzi. I'm the President/CEO of the McMenville-Warn County Chamber of Commerce. As you know, that the Chamber is a membership organization and we must rely on local governments for funding programs that do not inherently generate revenue, but invest in the community development and quality of life. We rely on funding to support tourism as well as the welcoming center. I think everybody knows that the Chamber of Commerce is the main place when people come to visit and relocate and want information about McMenville and Warren County. You'll probably like this one. We did not receive funding last year as we could not complete the program we had funds approved for due to COVID. That funding was returned, reallocated back to the county. And I took a lot of heat on that, I'll admit that, but I just thought I'd let you know about that. We still continue to support the county with being part of Retired Tennessee Program. That is a major program. It costs the Chamber $3,000 a year to be part of Retired Tennessee. Plus, they require a Chamber exec to go to one of these conferences, expos, once a year, or we lose our funding for Retired Tennessee. We're also part of the American Association of Retired Communities. We have advertising Tennessee vacation guides with various costs starting at like $6,700 and other local publications of $1,200 and so on. The Chamber Leadership Program is a personal development program designed to motivate participants to develop and enhance leadership skills by addressing pertinent community issues. Leadership McMenville enhances the workforce in Warren County and will positively impact the quality of life for citizens, employees, and community leaders. A similar leadership program is with our youth. It goes through the same type of program as our adult leadership program. The leadership program is in its 36th year of being. And as you can imagine, since then, the expense of running the leadership program is very expensive. The Chamber helps support staff-wise for Citizens for Progress, for student scholarships, and birth from book, birth, books from birth, excuse me. Through the Chamber Network of Business Resources, we keep the business community informed of state policies, providing them a continent of information about COVID-19. We also provide small business information about starting a business, coordinate with IDB about giving information about possibly people would like to relocate here. We've hosted two job fairs with the Small Business Development Center and the State Workforce Development. One of the job fairs, we held at the mall and it cost the Chamber $2,300 just to put on that job fair. We published a new Chamber magazine highlighting multiple areas of McMenville and Warren County. I left a box out there. I think I brought it the last time I had a meeting with you and those are out there. With COVID subsiding, that's a hard word, subsiding, we will become fully operational Chamber. We will be doing a luncheons, luncheon learns. In fact, we'll be doing a luncheon with Motlow and TCAT on the 11th of April. That is for the community. If people are interested in going to either Motlow or TCAT, then they can come have a free lunch and learn about the opportunities.
I'm sorry, that's time, Don.
Okay, yes sir.
Any questions?
I would.
Yes, Commissioner Prater.
I would like to make a statement. If you look out here, it says McMenville, Warren County. I remember a day when it's just McMenville, Warren County wouldn't hardly even mention it. He has done a great job, done it. He's showing, he's getting out there away from the city limits of McMenville and he's going to Morrison, he's going to places Viola. I mean, you know, he is trying. And I'll have to say, it's a better Chamber than it has been. And I used to be a member, I dropped out, I'm a member now. So, I mean, he is, he is trying.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I make one comment on that? Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
We are, we are starting to do the business after hours. We have one scheduled for Viola. We have one scheduled for Morrison. And we also had one scheduled for Rock Island.
Alright, thank you, Don.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Chair Mental Health, Mr. Brian Herrmann.
How are you all tonight?
Good.
Next month, Chair will have been serving McMenville and Warren County for 52 years and we're very proud of that. And I have to look to your direction and say that 52 years is an accomplishment. We've always had community support from this community, in particular, you Commissioners, with your allotments. Allotments going to Chair is used completely and totally to remove any barriers to service for indigent clients coming to Chair. A barrier might be co-pays for medication. It might be initial pharmacy scripts, or it might be co-pays for services. And finally, we have to remove the barrier of hunger for a lot of our individuals. We keep a closet at Chair with canned goods to get two or three days of food for our clients. So I know you probably want numbers. The last full year that I could get solid numbers, your allotment helped 176 individuals. This year, we continue to help some other individuals and we will be submitting another request in this year's funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Brian?
Yes.
Are you, I don't know what the right word, are you seeing the homeless people? Is there any of those that come to Chair?
That's a big portion of the population that this funding helps. The numbers are up for the community. We're seeing more individuals. And then they come to us without the resources to start services, get services, and continue services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next is Citizens for Progress, and I guess you'll go into Habitat as well, Todd Herzog. While you're coming up, I will announce our Elected Officials' Day at the Habitat House is May the 7th. Lunch, which is always popular, is provided by Prater's Barbecue. So if you want to help out, if you haven't already, and I know Executive Haley's probably over Saturday, but if you have an opportunity to come out and help us, May the 7th would be a good day.
Okay, I'm Todd Herzog. I am Chair of the Business Roundtable Action Committee. Been doing that a lot of years. First, the Citizens for Progress Scholarship Fund. We started that in July of '07, 2007. There was no Tennessee Promise. There was no Tennessee Reconnect. We were the only show in town. We provided a last dollar scholarship. We gave local kids a chance to get a higher education in Warren County. And it's, we have raised about a million and a half dollars over that 15-year period. And we continue to be, continue to be very relevant and important. In fact, this appears to be the most expensive year coming up that we've ever had. That's even going back before Tennessee Promise. Business Roundtable was the initiator of this program and we've been the facilitator and the monitor of it. We also are the fundraising yard. We started knocking on doors in December, asking for money from major donors. And we have a committee of 10 that are working on that right now. We started in January. We'll go till May, trying to recruit money. We just had an article in the local paper last, on the 16th, talking about where we stand with this program and also asking for donations. Last year, that article with that appeal for donations, we got two people give us $1,000 each. That's the first time we ever had that money. You may say, "Well, what do you do now that Tennessee Promise is out there?" We do a lot. At the high school, dual enrollment are basically college classes that are given to juniors and seniors the option to take while they're in high school. And the incentive there is that those classes then can, in most cases, be accredited into a full-blown program if they're going on to college or to get a degree from TCAT. But most dual enrollment classes at high school, the dual enrollment funds don't cover the full tab. So we pick up the part they don't do. And that's for juniors and seniors. We also chose to give aid to students taking the four-year bachelor's degree program that involves a associate's degree program from Motlow and two more years of Tennessee State from Nashville coming down to get a four-year degree in industrial technology. We give those students $1,000 a year in their third year and fourth year. We also give aid to students that get fall by the wayside for whatever reason. They didn't get their paperwork in time. Whatever personal challenge they may have, we look at and consider it individually and help if we need to. Last but not least, last summer, we interviewed kids, freshmen that were gonna be sophomores last August. And we picked eight and we gave them, we paid their tuition to take machine shop technology. The state doesn't offer tuition money for sophomores. We did. I see Randy shaking his head. It was a bit of an experiment because nobody's ever done it before and the state doesn't do it. We just paid, we just picked up the tuition. I can, I'm here to tell you that the kids loved it. They're doing great. The instructor loved it. And it tickled me because both TCAT and Motlow come to us and say, "Hey, this worked so good. We want to expand this program. We want to, we want to have sophomores take all of our dual enrollment classes starting just upcoming August. Will you pay the tariff?" And with some qualifications, we're gonna try. It's gonna add about 50 grand worth of cost to what we do. But, by the way, the five programs, our machine shop technology, where Randy and I got a million dollar grant a couple of years ago, that made, all that equipment is new and shiny and great. Welding, very popular program. A brand-new program, building construction technology, with a great instructor. Auto-technology and mechatronics.
Alright, Todd, that's time on that one.
Okay.
Any questions on this part?
How many kids are you seeing in these programs at the high school? Pardon me? How many kids are you seeing in these programs at the high school? Well, a dual enrollment is 400, roughly 400 taking dual enrollment right now. And that doesn't count sophomores. And we're picking up, we're spending probably between 10 and 20 grand to cover what the state doesn't cover. And of course, that will greatly go up with what we're gonna try to do next year with sophomores. By the way, we think a sophomore, that'd be three years of college classes in high school, they're far more likely to go on and get more education. They'd be more, certainly more desirable to be hired by industry with three years instead of two. So we, we see it as an absolute no-brainer because that is the way to go. And now, the eight kids that we got, four were straight A students. So they were, they were good kids.
Alright, anything else before, go ahead.
Commissioner Herzog, do you have any manufacturers that give promotions to scholarships toward our schooling out there in the machine shop? Yes, we had, we had seven or eight partners from industry on that grant. We also, we also actively recruit money from, for our scholarship fund from industry. Like Bridgestone gave us $8,000. Eurosa gave us five. And the list goes on and on. I had one individual gave us four this year, which is, which is, that's the high watermark for an individual.
Thank you, Todd. Now, if you would, we'll go directly into Habitat for Humanity.
Well, both these programs, I've been with since day one and they both go back a long time. Habitat started in the fall of '98. We built 34 homes so far. And the 35th was started recently. Those homes, by the way, represent over 20 grand in property tax collections that didn't exist before they were built. We don't receive any money from big Habitat. We're self-funded. We operate a restorer that involves a lot of hard work. Nothing free there. We use the current home payments to help revenue stream to build new ones. Last year, as you might expect, building material costs skyrocketed. It cost us $97,000 to build our home last year. That was an all-time record in Enson. And not much relief this year. record in Enson. Uh, and not much relief this year, but wherever we build a home, greatly enhances the value of the neighborhood, and gets everybody more excited about it. Habitat is a Christian ministry. The thing that's interesting about Habitat, you say, "Well, you just build one home for one family," but it involves a lot of people. We, uh, we have 56 volunteer groups that we appeal to, to, to help build a home, and on average, we, we have about 35 that build each home. And th- those are volunteers from the high school, like, we just had the football team out. Junior ROTC is coming near term. Both basketball teams help. Uh, cheerleaders are gonna help again this year. We have churches. We have local industries. We have students from TCAT and Motlow. We have volunteer groups and clubs. It's, and I can tell you personally, it's quite a thrill to work alongside of different people from different walks of life that are just there to help build that home. So, it really is, uh, the true spirit of Tennessee volunteerism. The Habitat homes are small, but they're well-built. Uh, 1,000 square feet, uh, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, front and rear porch, central air and heat, vinyl siding, landscaping by master gardeners. Uh, Habitat homes are not free. The owners must pay back the material cost at cost, plus their insurance and taxes. But the current monthly tab's about $400. It's still a really good deal compared to other cost of homes. Most Habitat homeowners, it's the first time they've had a home. It's the first time their kids have had their own bedroom. First time their kids have been able to play in a yard. So, there's some things there that, that we think are pretty significant. If a homeowner pays the term, he'll have an asset worth well over $100,000. Um, last year, the city started giving us money. We didn't make it with, with the county, but we hope to this year. Uh, of the 34 homes we built, there's a retail value about 3.5 million, and of that, uh, over a million is the, the free labor that, that we coordinate. That's a pretty big value-added, uh, benefit to the county. Uh, we do have a formal dedication ceremony that goes to each home, where we have five to seven pastors from the area, uh, co-celebrate. We just had an article in last Sunday's paper about the new home with the football team there, and the lady's gonna get it there. Uh, these people are, are very excited. We have a very active board of directors, uh, experienced. Well, we build two homes next year, because Bridgestone was gonna boost, build one for us. So, I, I believe Habitat's made a big difference in the quality of life in Warren County, and if you go talk to the people who get a home, they're pretty excited about it. So, we hope you'll consider us this year when you do funding.
Thank you. Any questions for Todd? Thank you, Todd.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other businesses this time? I've already made my announcement. Go ahead, Executive Haley.
Just a couple of things. I, I know it's on here about Habitat volunteer schedule, 'cause Habitat wasn't scheduled for tonight. Uh, so, we, uh, I sent out an email with all the schedule on that, and Amy Fauci is gonna be the recipient with her three children, and the dedication will be on June 18th. I think it's still scheduled for June 18th right now, Todd, for the dedication. But it's every-
The speech is the 18th, and the, uh, the date that, uh, interviews at WYL actually work, May 7th.
May 7th, but they work every Saturday, so if you've got additional time, there's usually work today. It is on Mountain Street that I was gonna tell you. It's, uh, 232 Mountain Street. You try to cross from Dr. Pepper, so you may have seen it go up, so it's gonna up pretty fast, so it, it looks really good. So, uh, another announcement as well is that T. Ramirez, who was in here earlier, requested that his resumes, uh, be returned to him. So, if you got read those resumes and you don't want to keep it, um, he wants those collected. He's gonna come by and get them, uh, as well. So, uh, and a little shout-out for, for TCAT as well. Um, Mr. England knows, Commissioner England does, that T-, our, our TCAT is the only TCAT in the whole state. It's got partnerships with a correctional institution, and we've become basically the poster child of a success story. And, uh, Mr. Jim Wapler will be here next time, do a little presentation about the Snap-on Tools program that we've got going out there, and then I'll have a little bit more information about the welding program that will be initiated also. So, it, it is changing lives just like Habitat, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor. We have motion from Commissioner Taylor, a second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone want to speak to that? I didn't think so. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
If any, if any of the Commissioners haven't gotten this Blue Book, I've brought several copies of this, the Tennessee Blue Book. If anybody would like it, they could have one. Do you have one?